Good evening. I'm happy to welcome all of my fellow board members and call the May 25th, 2021 school board meeting to order. Pam, roll call please.
Mrs. Belford.
Present.
Ms. McDougall.
Present.
Mrs. Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Susan.
Present.
And Mrs. Campbell.
Present.
Please be reminded that school board meetings will be held in a manner consistent with other district meetings and activities. All attendees must wear a face mask covering the nose and mouth at all times when not more than six feet from the nearest person. Your cooperation is greatly appreciated. We will now hold a moment of silent reflection and memory of three of our BPS family members who recently passed away. Kayla Simpkins, a ninth grade student from Merritt Island High School. David Mumford, a teacher from Viera High School. And Karen Tomato, a cafeteria worker from Delora Middle School. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to offer my fellow board members and Dr. Mullins the opportunity to recognize students, staff, or members of the community. Who'd like to kick us off this evening? Ms. McDougall.
I just have one, and I just, um, I want to give a shout out to our PE teacher at Viera Elementary, Sarah Dingus. I hope I'm saying your name right, Sarah. She just, um, she's a member of the Professional Organization for Health and Physical Education of Teachers. And there was a challenge with this magazine, and she, it was by Shape, I don't know if any of you know the magazine Shape, but anyhow, she won, and she is on the cover of Shape magazine, and they had to put together with six words their experience of teaching this year. And her words were "Going the Distance With Love and Perseverance." So, I just want to give a shout out to Sarah. Thanks very much for all you do at Viera Elementary for our students. So, congratulations, Sarah.
Thanks, Ms. McDougall. Anyone else? Ms. Campbell?
Hi, I'm happy to go next. I just wanted to recognize, this is going to be kind of a broad one, but as I've been going to schools the last couple of weeks, I have seen a lot of events that our administrators and teachers and our students have been organizing to celebrate the end of the year, and in a year when really nothing has been normal. It's been exciting to see senior breakfast, field days, awards programs, non-proms, just all the things, and the concerts that have gone on. And I just want to give big kudos to our administrators and our teachers who organize it, and for the students who help plan. I even heard about a Glow Night that was put on one of our elementary schools. So, thank you guys for trying to recognize our students and celebrate this end of the year. And this is kind of a recognition slash board report, but I had my bi-monthly meeting with Mr. Bruin today for our GNCR update, and really excited. If you haven't seen our videos that they've been making, the CTE programs, I know I'm recording mine tomorrow, I think Ms. Jenkins is recording hers this week also. They're fabulous, they're so good. And Mike back in our production department has done such a great job with those and recognizing all the amazing career and technical programs at our schools. So, just want to shout out to them. And then, I got a little sneak preview today of our school videos that are going to be released starting tomorrow. So, I'm really excited about that. Rock, Paper, Simple did those. I think tomorrow will be the release of Titusville High School. I hope I didn't give away any secrets. But I got to see the Palm Bay Elementary one, and they'll be starting to be released this week, and they're so good, letting our communities know the fabulous things that are going on, the fabulous people that are in each of our, those 14 schools that were chosen. So, really excited about that, and you guys will be seeing those very, very soon. So, that is it for me.
Super, thanks, Ms. Campbell.
It'll be my turn. So, today, or was it yesterday, we were at the CTE program in Rockledge. And many of you may know that there's a ship program where you can get your captain's license and learn to literally work at Port Canaveral. This is inside of one of our schools. It has its own simulators to learn how to manage a large ship, right? So, you get inside there, you have a destroyer, you have all these different ones, and you manage inside there, you come up on the sides. But what that does is, it's a pipeline of talent that we're taking from Rockledge as a program to then feed the employers out in Port Canaveral. Alright, that's great. So, we create these programs, these kids are super excited, and we have sort of a partner for that. But the problem is, is that we have a lot of career and technical programs that our BPS has done, but there's employers which are not taking our kids. And there's programs at Eastern Florida State that they line up to that aren't effectively being filled. So, I contacted Jack Parker yesterday, and him and I talked for a little while, former sheriff, now he's over there at Eastern Florida State, and I said, "How do we pull this stuff together? How do we align our programs now officially?" Because what we've been doing over the last three years is pulling it out of the earth and creating these programs. Now they're viable. Now they have people inside them, the students are buying in, they're going to them, and they're going, and these kids are coming out and graduating. We have Harris, L3 Harris hired 10 of our kids, we have career and technical programs that are doing it, but now we need to expand that for all of our children for employment. And I'll tell you why, and this should scare the heck out of everybody in here. So, I was flying over the Bahamas, and I looked down, and I said to the pilot, "What is that?" And he said, "That's the new Chinese manufacturing center." I said, "What are you talking about?" And he said, "Yeah, China has come to the Bahamas, created large manufacturing centers, and they're moving their Chinese labor from China to work those manufacturing centers." And the gentleman that I was with, that I won't say his company, who is from this area, said that normally he has a lot of that made in China, and now he's moving his operations to the Bohemian one, so because it's going to be cheaper. So, we as Americans are going to be competing with a labor source that's right off of our shores. And if we don't, as a school board, pick it up and start pushing, and as our Eastern Florida State, and all of our partners, and all of our legislators that are out there that have got their minds on a bunch of other things, we need to come together on this. And that's what I just wanted to say. I was a little fired up about that. So, we're getting moving on the career and technical stuff, and we need all your help. Listen, all you guys come in here, and we're all fired up about the school district, right? And I get you, like, I love the fact that you guys come here. But I need your help past this. Not just come in here for, you know what I mean, the one little issue or anything like that. I want to see you guys help us, sign up to be volunteers inside of our schools and help us. Because this is no longer a Brevard problem, this is going to be a society program for our problem for our country. And I'm looking forward to your guys' help, so thank you. That's it. Sorry, I got on a tangent. We normally give shout outs, but that was kind of a shout out with a little tail.
Thank you.
And I haven't talked for a little while, so.
I knew you were saving it up for something, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins?
Thank you, Ms. Belford. I just want to give a quick shout out to our recently announced Rookie and Emerging Teachers of the Year. Our Human Resources staff kind of developed this award and recognition a couple of years ago, and it really just has grown in purpose and enthusiasm. So, our winners this year are, I'll start with Carl Webb at Discovery Elementary School, Elementary Emerging Teacher of the Year. Taylor Jenkins at Cambridge Elementary as an Elementary Rookie of the Year. So, that's a first-year teacher who has already celebrated and recognized for their great contribution to the classroom. And our Emerging Teachers of the Year are second or third-year teachers that are just doing a great job and exceeding expectations as a rather young teacher. So, we also have Alexandria Wicker from Jackson Middle School, Middle School Emergency, Middle School Emerging Teacher of the Year. I had the privilege of hearing her speak the other night at the First Year Teacher, kind of a celebration of the end of the year program. And Alex, Second Year Teacher, is probably one of the most dynamic folks I've ever had the privilege of listening to. She kind of gave a year-end review and advice to first-year teachers. She was engaged, she applied every classroom strategy to her group of 50 teachers in the room. It was fabulous. So, it's not surprising that she's the Emerging Teacher of the Year. Andrew West from Jackson Middle School as a Rookie Teacher of the Year, and Cheyenne McCully at Cocoa Beach Junior/Senior High School as High School Rookie Teacher of the Year. So, congratulations to those great folks.
Awesome, thank you, Dr. Mullins. So, I just have two really quick. One, just want to do a huge shout out to Core Construction, who is, does a lot of work for us here in the district, but recently, a few months ago, I reached out to them, and there was, Dr. Mullins and I had been out at MEMS, and there were some old planter boxes that were eroding, falling apart. It was a mess. And MEMS is one of our schools that doesn't get a whole lot of love. They're kind of up there, isolated, and so I reached out to Core at that point and said, "Hey, do you think you guys would be willing to come out and do just like some beautification projects?" Because they had indicated that they would really like to be more involved in our schools and supporting them on a day-to-day basis. And sure enough, they, along with one of their subcontractors, went out to MEMS Elementary, I believe it was two weeks ago, and the planter boxes had already been taken care of by our district staff, thankfully, but they completely redid the front entrance to the school with plants and mulch, and just made it look absolutely beautiful. So, a huge thank you to them for going above and beyond to support our schools outside of the realm of the work that they do for us. And then I just have to give a really quick plug, I don't know if this has been mentioned in like a general board meeting, but our amazing team here at the district, one of our district priorities is our Thrive by Five program, which is ensuring that children, you know, in the womb are being read to and exposed to books and reading and that sort of thing. And so, our team has put together these phenomenal bags, which include a bib, my Vanna White over here is showing you all the goodies in there, the book, and I'm sure all of you know, the Brown Bear book. Yes, the only book that matters. A magnet to remind them to go to our website, where we will have an enormous amount of information for all parents of young children, and then an app that they can download too to assist them with making sure that their kids are exposed to the right things early in life. And so, this is an initiative that you will be seeing much more as we roll this out into our community. Want to say thanks to George McCarion, who committed today from Parish Hospital to support the program as well. We have several community partners coming on board to make sure that this program is sustainable and that we can have full immersion throughout the entire Brevard County community. So, thanks to our team and for all those people who are supporting it to make it possible. And Dr. Mullins, you look like you want to say something?
Well, I just got to, I got to add, you mentioned George McCarion, the CEO of Parish, but also give a shout out to Andy Romine of Stewart Medical Group. I talked to him last week, it was a five-minute conversation, he said, "We're in." And talked to Steve Johnson, CEO of Health First, and he said, "Let's make this happen." So, all of our major health partners out there, when they heard what we were trying to do and why we're trying to do it, so I'll share my, I'll share the vision for this. You won't be able to go anywhere, not to CVS, the doctors, the dentist, the hair salon, and you won't see a reminder, a visual reminder, that we are committed as a community to come around our youngest and help them thrive by five. Because when our kids come to us, reading, ready, in kindergarten, our trajectory for them, their trajectory for themselves, is the sky is the limit. So, just very excited about our community already coming around us and wanting to champion this with us. So, you can tell, it's been, it's been in the making for a while, so it's exciting to see it getting off the ground.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Mullins. I think we all share in your excitement on that. And so, these bags, all of our hospital partners will be putting these into the new mommy bags. For anyone who's had a child, when you leave the hospital, they give you all kinds of great information, those will be included in those as well. So, we will be partnering with them at birth in the hopes of making sure that they are fully prepared for success as life moves on. Alright, that is going to then bring us to the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Mullins?
Madam Chair, members of the board, on tonight's agenda, we have administrative staff recommendations, 19 consent items, 10 action items, and one information item. Changes made to the agenda since it was first released to the public on May 18th are as follows. Item A7 on administrative staff recommendations, F14 on reappointment nominations of annual contract teachers for 2021-22. F15 on reappointment nominations of support personnel and school safety and security specialists for the 2021-2022 school year. G34 on administrative and professional reappointment nominations for the 2021-2022 school year, and G35 on reappointment nomination of annual contract teacher 2021-22 school year received revisions.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes 5-0. Dr. Mullins, will you please let, Dr. Mullins, will you please let us know about our administrative staff recommendation?
Yes, we have 10 persons under this category for the board to consider.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ms. Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Uh-huh, the motion passes 5-0. Okay, we are now at public comments. If we have more speakers than seated inside the boardroom, additional speakers may be waiting outside and escorted in at the appropriate time. Speakers are required to wear a face mask covering the nose and mouth while walking to the microphones and when traveling back to his or her seats. Though school board policy 0169.1 limits to 30 minutes the portion of the meeting during which the public is invited to participate and provide public comment, the policy further provides that this time limit may be extended by a vote of the board. We have 18 speakers this evening. I will entertain a motion to include those 18 in the first public comment section, or would you all like to?
Move them to the public zone, right where we are.
Include everyone all together?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. You okay with that?
I have a motion and a second to include 18 speakers in the.
Did I, did we have another claim? I screwed it up.
No.
I just want to make sure.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please identify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay? Okay. Alright. Ms. McDougall? Alright, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We have a clock in front of me to help you keep track of your time. When your time is over, you will be asked to stop and allow the next speaker, his or her turn. Always keep in mind that reasonable decorum is expected at all times, and your statement should be directed to the board chairman. As chairman, I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement when time is up it's personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. Should an individual not observe proper etiquette, I may request the individual leave the meeting. Let's all encourage an environment appropriate for our children who may be present or watching from home. Please note that in order to proceed with the business portion of the meeting, board members will not have opportunity to respond to speakers during or immediately following public comments. I may, however, request follow-up on specific issues. Let's begin with the first three speakers, Karen Colby, Janice Crisp, and Damani Hozie. Before speaking, please state your name, the organization you represent, if any, and identify the topic you will be discussing. Karen Colby? Give me just one second, Karen, I'm a little bit out of whack here on my lineup.
Whenever you're ready. Okay, hi. I'm a senior mom of a student at Satellite High School. All six of my, our children have gone through Satellite High School successfully and graduated. I'm here, I have a few things to bring up, and I'm going to start speaking quickly. I want to give a shout out because I feel like there are some teachers at Satellite High School who were not recognized. These are not only teachers, they wear different hats. Ted Kimmy, Assistant Athletic Director and Coach of the Satellite High School Football Team, has developed a program of excellence and changed an entire school's mentality, outlook, behavior with his uncommon sense of excellence in education for our children. He looks after quite a few kids in his classes, as well as being a father and being an excellent role model as a West Point grad. He brings much to our program. Then we have Carrie Eller, the guidance chair. Carrie Eller has personally gone out of her way and above and beyond during COVID to ensure the children were happy. An unhappy fact is, there's been over five suicides at Satellite High School in the past six calendar years. Thanks to Carrie Eller, I believe, we have broken that, and we have had zero issues this year and last year even with COVID. So, my importance that she needed recognized from my district, which is Satellite Beach, and to say thank you to Carrie and to Coach Kimmy. Last is Doug Butler, the track coach who had a phenomenal year. Okay, I wanted to speak about, first of all, a second of all, no letter being sent to ask Governor DeSantis to veto the transgender ban on youth sports with the females having to have men running among them. This is not the wishes of your constituents, and if you vote for this, we will remember that on Election Day. Critical race theory, this has no place in schools. This is a parental education thing to teach people to be respectful of their neighbors and their classmates. We have zero issues at Satellite High School, so I would say if you have any questions, give that Carrie Eller I mentioned a shout out, she'll help. The abomination of authority, overreach can be invalidated using the Hatch Act that any parent here can put in their child's file, which will stop teaching of such specific materials that you don't want your kids to have that information of. I'm talking about changing their gender. Lastly, graduation, I've got 30 seconds. I'm asking Dr. Mullins through the chair politely, as he is the only person who can say yes or no, single-handedly, to end the mask mandate for graduation day. By having the kids space eight feet across or singly to walk across that ramp to shake elbow bump with their principal without a mask is what I'm asking slash begging for. Okay, it's on him, and I respectfully ask that, and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Karen.
Jonathan Riches.
Janice Crisp.
Hello, my name is Janice Crisp, and I again come to you and speak on behalf of many of the parents who can't be here today. As Karen spoke about earlier, the mask policy was put in place, not in the dress code, but as its own separate policy, and was given as a guide by, you mentioned in this policy that several different professionals and elected officials to guide you guys, but you have not taken their guidance. The governor, the Department of Health, and all of the other health professionals have said the emergency is over. And I will quote from that policy, "The board grants the superintendent the authority to terminate the use of face coverings under this policy when the emergency is declared over or in working with the Department of Health or local health experts. It is determined that it's safe for schools to operate without these measures in place. The superintendent always has the option to bring a recommendation to the end of the implementation of this policy to the next available board meeting for the board's consideration." Well, here we are, the governor and the Department of Health and other experts have said it's over. It's time for the, for you guys to say it's over and give these students the graduation they deserve. Secondly, I want to bring to your attention the Hatch Act, which says, I can just find my papers here, it is part of the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment found in Section 445 of the General Education Provisions Act. It says that no student shall be required as part of any program, testing, psychiatric examination, texting, survey, or treatment of psychological examination in the classroom in the primary purpose to reveal information concerning one or more of the following: political affiliations, mental/psychological problems potentially embarrassing to the student, sexual or behavioral attitudes, illegal, antisocial, self-incriminating, and demeaning behavior. This includes anything having to do with transgender or any kind of gender issues, and the whole, whole issue of gender issues going on at this school should have never been brought, which invalidates the letter that a certain board member is wanting this board to sign on to. It should not happen, let the legislature do what they're going to do, and it should never be brought according to federal statutes. If you need to have your lawyer look at it, I'm happy to give them a copy. So, leave these children alone and let them learn the facts. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Janice. Damani Hozie, and then as Damani's approaching, our next three after that will be Jabari Hozie, Chelsea Partridge, and James Dolly.
Good evening, board. My name is Damani Hozie. I am father of three children at Brevard Public Schools and a practicing family physician. I was very disappointed with your vote to end the mask mandate for students on June 3rd and urge you to reconsider that decision. The COVID-19 vaccines have performed very well for those who have had them, so well that the CDC felt compelled to recommend the lifting of restrictions on social contact and the ending of the mask requirement for the vaccinated. The key word is vaccinated. This recommendation does not apply to the unvaccinated. Unfortunately, children under 12 are not approved for COVID vaccines, and even those over 12 have only recently been granted access to one of these vaccines. It is very likely that the majority of K through 12 students will not have access to the vaccines before the 2021-2022 school year. Because of this, the CDC guidelines are clear. Universal and correct usage of masks should be required in all K through 12 schools. The science supports this. Children get COVID. There have been nearly 4 million US cases of COVID in children, representing 14% of all cases. Children now make up about 20-22% of new cases. Hundreds of kids have died from COVID. There have been more childhood deaths from COVID than from flu in any flu season ever recorded by the CDC. The long-term effects of COVID-19 on the developing bodies and minds of children are still unknown. Well over 3,000 children nationwide have had a severe reaction to COVID-19 called multi-system inflammatory syndrome, which leads to hospitalization and sometimes ICU admissions and death. Masks work, multiple studies have shown this. COVID doesn't care about all of our desire to get back to normalcy. All it wants to do is infect, multiply, and spread. We need to take some of the emotion out of this issue and follow what the science tells us. Kids can get COVID, it can cause serious illness and death. Masks are simple and safe. Masks are a simple and safe and necessary tool to prevent the spread. Therefore, we must reinstate the mask mandate for the health and safety of our children. To be honest, I'm somewhat dumbfounded that I have to stand before you making this case. School districts all over the country are following the evidence. They're going to in-person learning, which is, which is a good thing, but are requiring masks to do it safely. BPS should do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Jabari?
Hi, I have, I'm Jabari Hozie. I have two kids in BPS, one that is on the way. I am a software engineer, bachelor's in math and physics, I have a master's in public administration policy, and I'm here to express my concern about the removal of the mask mandate for the schools. Expressing this concern because I wasn't able to attend last meeting, like many other parents who are concerned or working on a Friday at 11:00 a.m., were unable to attend. And I wasn't sure what prompted this decision to remove the mask mandate. I wasn't sure if it was because of the new CDC guidelines that have loosened, but for fully vaccinated individuals. I wasn't sure if it was pressure from other groups, outside groups, individuals who feel like the pandemic is supposedly over, as many are still getting infected, including children. So like kids like mine, who will continue to wear a mask, are at risk now. While my children are protecting the unmasked, the unmasked children are putting them at a much higher risk. The numbers have remained low because children have been sheltered during this time from adults. They've been able to attend virtual school. My kids have been in spaced-out classrooms, spaced-out lunches, spaced-out activities, spaced-out social distancing in classrooms and art rooms, hand washing and masks, and social distancing has helped that. And even while doing all this, we still have a school COVID dashboard that stays active regularly with cases and quarantine cases that have even affected my children's classroom. We are ultimately leaving the decision in the children's hands to protect themselves and wearing a mask. They are children, they do not make to make adult decisions to protect themselves. We are here to do that as their parents, and particularly, we're leaving it up to the board, school board, to determine this because we are not there to be with our children to tell them to wear a mask. If they decide to go into school after they've been given a mask and their friends tell them not to wear one, I can't be there to tell them otherwise. There is no way during a global pandemic, a productive choice to take our children and pack them into a classroom with no mask during a time where there's an airborne virus and expect there will be social distancing and protection for them. So instead, I'm here at the end of day, end of my day, where expressing this disappointment and leadership to help protect my children attending Brevard Public Schools. I did closely watch the, on Friday, and I saw different percentages and things being tossed out, such as 1% severe illness. We have 70,000 students, and 1% would that be 700 students, so we're okay to accept 700 students with a severe reaction, .001%, which would be seven deaths. What those seven deaths could be prevented just wearing a mask.
Thank you, Jabari. I'm sorry, but your time is up. We do appreciate you joining us this evening. Chelsea Partridge?
Thank you. Whenever you're ready, Chelsea.
Right. Hello, my name is Chelsea Partridge, and I am here today speaking on behalf of the Space Coast Equality Coalition, in favor of the school board writing a letter to Governor DeSantis, asking him to veto SB 1028. SB 1028 includes blatantly discriminatory measures to prohibit trans students from playing sports. If put into law, this puts our schools in a position to discriminate against vulnerable trans youth and does not prioritize all students in our schools. It is also unconstitutional, and similar laws are being legally challenged in other states. Last year, the Supreme Court, with a majority opinion authored by Neil Gorsuch, ruled in Bostock v. Clayton County that it is illegal to discriminate on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. Because of this ruling, these discriminatory laws prohibiting trans students from participating in sports are in violation of Title IX. Additionally, memorandums, excuse me, from the Department of Justice, executive orders have reiterated the fact that Bostock v. Clayton County applies to Title IX. Title IX states that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, where sex is defined to include sexual orientation and gender identity, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subjected to discrimination under any educational program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And because schools receive federal funding, Title IX covers school sports. SB 1028 is arguably a violation of federal law. For the past decade, the Florida High School Athletic Association has had rules in place that allowed all students to compete in athletics regardless of their biological sex at the time of their birth. The idea that our students are suddenly under threat by fellow students that are looking to dominate and misrepresent themselves in school sports or are targeting other students is a myth. This is a solution in search of a problem that does not exist, and there have been no cases presented that there has been transgendered sports fraud being perpetuated. In the beginning of March, one of our school board members even elaborated on how detailed the process was for trans students to participate in sports, and this outright ban does not help them or any students. It uses them as political pawns. Trans students deserve to be treated with the same respect as other students and deserve the opportunity to play on school sports as they have been for a decade. To date, more than 100 current and former members of Congress, state lawmakers, mayors, and local elected officials in the state of Florida have voiced their opposition against this bill, and I hope that you will join me and others in opposing this bill by writing this letter and standing with our trans students and all students. Thank you.
Thanks, Chelsea. James Dolly, and then after James, our next three will be Matthew Dolly, Michael Bloom, and Shelley Rodden. Right? Slightly too soon. Whenever you're ready, James.
My name is James Dolly. I'm eight years old.
Hold on one second.
Okay.
We can't hear you.
Really close.
Yep.
James?
Perfect.
My name is James Dolly. I'm eight years old, I'm in second grade. Thank you so much for voting to make masks optional. When I go to third grade, I hope things are back to normal. I want tables in the cafeteria to go back to normal, not just two people per table. I want to stop sitting on dots on the ground and sit by our classroom door in the mornings. I want the volunteers back. I want everyone sitting next to each other in the classroom again.
You're okay, you're doing, you're doing awesome. Take a deep breath.
You're doing better than all the rest of them.
Yep, whenever you're ready. No rush, okay?
I also have two questions for you. Can you tell all of Brevard Public Schools to tell that the mask mandate is dropped down and you should keep up the good work? Thank you.
Thank you, James. To Dr. Mullins, you may.
Hey, Dr. Mullins, maybe we can have him do a commercial for us? Seriously. I'm serious.
Matthew?
This one on. So I just want everybody to know, that's my oldest boy, and I taught him everything he knows, not his mom, so. But one thing is important, is like I, I want you to understand, gentlemen and ladies, that's genuine. He asked to do that. He wasn't coached. He's in second grade, his little brother's in pre-K. They went to school with masks on. They asked him not to wear masks. As parents, we advised them, you don't have to wear it, it's your decision. And this is dangerous conversation to me because it's personal experience. There's been a lot of haves and have-nots conversation tonight. Do you have a vaccine? Do you have not have a vaccine? My children, both of them, were singled out and segregated on more than one occasion, although the policy says they don't have to wear masks because they chose not to wear masks, okay? One child was sent home multiple times from school because he had a runny nose, which he did not, by a teacher who was at work sick. The age group that is more susceptible to COVID and fall ill and pass away, being at work sick, sending home a healthy, non-symptomatic child, okay? This is dangerous territory here. We have people coming up here talking about, you know, the have-nots are putting the haves in jeopardy. Since the COVID outbreak, I said this last week, or however many days it was ago, 14 children in the state of Florida have died of COVID. It's on a CDC website. Since the outbreak, 11 children under the age of 17 have died of influenza. It's very similar, okay? There's not a lot of difference. Now, I'm not a doctor, I'm the village idiot, but that being said, I have a brain, I know how to use it, okay? In the state of Florida, there's a .00035% fatality rate for children under the age of 17. Was it last year, 380 people drowned in the state of Florida? I don't see a movement to buy, fill dirt and start filling in swimming pools. More people die on the roads every day, you know, there's people out there dying of other things. This is dangerous because my children, my staff, for whatever reason, and I gotta give the school staff credit because the principal addressed it and the problems were fixed. Which is why I never brought it to you guys, because it shouldn't have been none of your business, because we fix it at the small levels. But that being said, we got people coming up here saying, well, those children are endangering my child. If my child is non-symptomatic, he cannot have a respiratory infection that he can spread, okay? This is, it is what it is. I read documents last week written by doctors and peer-reviewed journals that said this. This is dangerous language. Don't come up here and talk about the haves and have-nots, because what we do with our families is nobody else's business as yours.
Thank you, Matthew, for joining us this evening. Michael Bloom? Michael?
My name's Michael Bloom, I live in Palm Bay. Thank the board for letting us all speak tonight. I'm asking you to send the letter to the governor urging him to veto SB 1028. Leadership comes from the top. A change in school climate comes from the top. The students need to hear that you support every student. They need to hear that you will stand up for every student. I was here at the April meeting and listened to most of you agonize over a decision you had to make concerning a teacher. I heard Mr. Susan passionately state that as a governing body, you should stand up when the state or federal government has got it wrong. The state has got it wrong with SB 1028. Tonight, the board has another chance to stand up for every student. The students are watching. They are looking for leadership, not political theater. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Shelley? And as Shelley's approaching, our next three speakers will be Catherine Delaney, Sarah Hardy, and Carol Bahamsky. I know I've said that name 10,000 times, and I should be able to say it right at this point, I apologize, Carol. Shelley? Rodden?
Hi, thank you, can you hear me? My name is Shelley Rodden, and I use she/her pronouns. I am the Youth Director for Space Coast Pride. I'm here tonight to speak to you regarding a letter that I support for BPS to send to the governor to veto SB 1028 respectfully, also known as the transgender sports ban. Transgender children go to Brevard Public Schools. They participate in sports. This is discriminatory legislation, which is wrong. BPS stands behind its policy for bullying, as well as nondiscrimination against sexual orientation and gender identity. Discriminatory legislation is legalized bullying. Why are we doing this? These children don't want special rights. They have been participating in sports for our schools for a decade with no issues. The letter that Orange County Public Schools wrote to the governor to veto this bill, there's no danger in writing a letter to the governor, we all have that right. I'm asking you as a board to support all students and send that message to all students, your transgender students as well. We all know that participating in sports is good for children. It is good for their development, it is good for their well-being, it is good for their health. For months, we have been in this room, listening to parents talk about their rights. For months, we have heard about the health and safety and welfare of children. What about transgender children? What about their well-being and safety? Do they suddenly not matter? What kind of message are we sending? Yes, ultimately, it is not up to this school board. It is up to our governor. And I'm not going to get into politics. I support this board. You have done the right thing for our kids. Please continue to do the right thing for our kids. This is dangerous. It is discrimination in its simplest form. Why are we discriminating against children that go to our schools? I don't understand it. I will fight for them. I ask that you write this letter in support for Governor DeSantis to veto this bill. Tell the, tell these kids that they matter. Tell these kids that they have the right to go to Brevard Public Schools, that you support them, that they belong, you care about them, and let them play. Thank you.
Thanks, Shelley. Catherine Delaney?
Hi, I'm the mom of three BPS kids. They are in sixth grade, third grade, and kindergarten. Today, I'm here to talk about graduation. Even though I don't have any seniors, I can't even imagine what these, you know, parents and kids the past two years have had to deal with with that. The question I am asking is what is the difference between June 4th and this Friday? There is no difference. Our seniors should be able to walk across that stage with no masks, with all the family there to support them. Some of these kids, it could be, you know, they are the first generation of graduates in their family, and I'm sure they want their aunts, uncles, cousins, everybody there supporting them, and to be able to have as many pictures and things like that, you know. The next thing is the permanent mask mandate hanging over our heads. I appreciate that you guys made it optional for last, for next year, but with this being a permanent policy, you guys have that hanging over our heads at any time you feel necessary to put that back in, into policy. Emergencies do not give the government to green light, to green light, or I'm sorry, emergencies do not give the government a green light to trample on our freedoms. We have medical freedom in this country. You do not have the right or the authority to force someone to wear a medical device. This is out of your realm. The next thing is quarantining our healthy kids. There is no reason for it. If my child is not showing any symptoms, they should not have to lose valuable time in school. The next point is critical race theory. This is based off of Marxism, and if you don't know what that is, please go look it up. This has no business in our schools. We need to go back to teaching our kids about being respectful to each other. Doesn't matter what race, gender, it doesn't matter, none of that should matter. It's just you're a human being and we respect you. It's just you're a human being and we respect you and treat others as you want to be treated. And... We need to teach our children about hard work and to reap those benefits. Nothing is given to us in life. And if you don't work for something, you don't have the right to take somebody else's hard work. The next thing is the trans letter. We have biological differences, boys are stronger than girls. If there was not a biological difference, then there would be no need...
Thank you, Catherine, we appreciate you joining us this evening.
There would be no need for...
Sarah Hardy?
Hello, my name is Sarah Hardy and I am a teacher at Rockledge High School. I'm actually the director of the fabulous maritime program that Mr. Susan and Dr. Mullins visited yesterday. Thank you, thank you. But I'm here in my capacity as head varsity cheerleading coach at Rockledge High. I'm also a graduate of Rockledge High School, where I was a high school cheerleader and a competitive All-Star cheerleader as well. I'm here tonight to provide some facts for you as you begin your discussion regarding competitive cheerleading in our district for next school year. Fact number one, we are one of only two school districts in the state that do not participate in FHSAA-sponsored competitive cheerleading. Fact number two, all 17 high schools in Brevard already have established cheerleading programs and coaches and involve passionate students and families. This means that we are already paying cheerleading coaches and would not have to create an additional supplement by choosing to add competitive cheer. Fact number three, a majority of colleges and universities around Florida and the United States offer some kind of cheerleading scholarship at the post-secondary level. This scholarship includes a combination of tuition, room and board, and/or book scholarships and discounts. By allowing our cheerleaders to compete, you give them the opportunity to be noticed for these scholarships at the next level. Fact number four, we have a large amount of support from across the district. Tonight, you'll hear from coaches and parents from Rockledge High School, West Shore Heritage, and watching at home, we also have individuals from Bayside and Cocoa Beach. Although we acknowledge that not every school wishes to participate in competitive cheer next school year, we do have a wide variety of parents, students, and coaches who want to pursue this opportunity. I'm gonna skip some of my facts, but I have more. But fact number six, moving forward with competitive cheerleading will help solve our district's Title IX issue. You may or may not be aware that we have a disproportionate amount of male athletes and male athletic opportunities in our district. By moving forward with competitive cheerleading, which is a primarily female sport, we will help move our district closer to Title IX compliance without incurring additional costs. My final point or fact is that adding competitive cheerleading is simply the smart, correct, and logical choice for our district, starting with next school year. We have the equipment that we need, we have the coaches already, we have a group of ready and willing athletes, when we simply need the board to recommend to Dr. Mullins and his staff to move forward with competitive cheerleading for next year and beyond. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sarah. Carol? After Carol, our next three speakers will be Jessica Todd, Ashley Hall, and Carrie. Gracie, sorry. Carol, whenever you're ready.
Okay, hello, my name's Carol Bahansky. I'm the parent of a sixth-grade Brevard Public School student. I feel like I'm becoming a regular up here, and I don't want to be a regular. But there's an issue I felt was important to bring to your attention tonight. Parents like me are getting notices about end-of-the-year activities at our children's schools. I personally received a notice that the sixth graders at my daughter's school will be having an end-of-the-year awards ceremony on June 2nd. However, the note also states that parents are not allowed on campus to attend these events. But hey, we might get to watch from home on a computer screen. I checked with my daughter's principal, who informed me that this is a school board policy, not an individual school decision. I understand why this policy would have been enacted back in August, but as we know now, it's going to be June and a lot has changed since August. Parents are currently allowed to attend basketball games and other events, so why not let a few parents come on campus to be there when their child receives an award for their hard work? Or attend another activity or special event that might be planned? As kids, I'm sure we all remember how important it was to have a parent present when we were receiving an award or present at other school functions. Just like you're trying to loosen the restrictions on graduation ceremonies, hopefully, for our seniors and parents this year, I hope you will look into doing the same for the undergraduate students as well. One of the reasons Moms for Liberty was started and has exploded across the country, now in 17 states, it's because parents feel like we're being squeezed out and shut out of public education. And this is a prime example of that, we're literally being shut out. I hope we won't be told that it's too late or that it would be too much of a disruption to make some accommodations for parents during the last couple of days of school. Holding events outside when possible, masks, social distancing, temperature checks for parents, any number of things could be done to make it work. Please take this into consideration tonight and loosen up this parents-not-allowed rule so that these final activities can be more inclusive to parents and more special for our kids. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Jessica Todd?
Hello, my name is Jessica Todd. Today, I'm here to talk to you guys to try to get you to support us and sign the letter that we're gonna send, hopefully, to Ron DeSantis to veto the trans sports ban. I graduated from a Brevard Public School in 2013, not that long ago. I recognize a lot of you. Mr. Novelli was my Southwest Middle School principal. So I've been there and I've been in these classes with these students. And I know them personally, and I've seen them turn into successful, functioning adults because they were able to participate in every activity, even back then when I was there. So why would we go backward? Why would we, you know, stop these kids from being able to interact with their peers, like myself? I'm just an ally, you know, here to try to support them and help them any way I can. And I've had close friends who have been in the middle of their transition. I've known them personally and I've seen them go through that change, even in school. And when they do that, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean they're stronger or weaker than another sex. It's just not true. There is science behind that, that is supported by the NCAA in fact, that they've even done the research. And the NCAA has policies still in place that allow their transgendered members to participate in the teams that they belong on. And that's because not a single transgender woman has actually won one of those competitions. So how exactly do they have an advantage? In addition to it being a discriminatory and hateful bill, it can also be an economical issue in Florida. The NCAA, which is my main point of respite this evening, because I've done a lot of research specifically on their organization, they already pulled their events from North Carolina for proposed bills that were going to be harmful and, you know, discriminatory against the LGBTQ+ community. In a statement to the Tampa Bay Times just last week, the spokeswoman, Gail Dent for the NCAA, said that the organization is going to continue to closely monitor state bills that impact trans student-athlete participation. That doesn't mean that necessarily they'll stop coming to Florida, but it very well could be an impact that comes from not just them, but other organizations that also support our trans youth. Thank you.
Thanks, Jessica. Ashley?
Hello, members of the board, my name is Ashley Hall and with Moms for Liberty in the Brevard Chair. I just want to start off by thanking you all for lifting the mask mandate, making it optional for next year. We are, as an organization, we are very grateful for that. And we wanted to personally thank you as the spokesperson for the organization. I want to thank you personally for making it optional for next year. We would like to... We were challenged in the beginning of this by one of you, saying we need to get back in the classroom and volunteer. We would love to do that. I hope next week or the next meeting, when you have your meeting about other COVID protocols, that that will be something that's discussed and reversed to allow parents back into the classroom. Because if anything is going to come out of this, parent organization, we want parents back in the classrooms, helping our teachers, helping do whatever is needed, helping with the CTE, helping with these things that we can be helping with. And we would love to be able to do that. So with that being said, challenge accepted. We will gladly get back into the classroom and do these things. That will be something that we push our members to do. The other thing is the healthy quarantines that I hope this next meeting will eradicate. Because this is not okay. We cannot be sending healthy children home. We cannot be going home for no symptoms just because maybe kind of sort of... We don't really know if you're gonna get sick. We can't continue that practice. So those are a few things that I wanted to touch on. I can echo what some other members have said. I'm not going to, because I already sent you the email with our stances on all that. So just want to thank you again. Let's get back into the classroom, let's stop healthy quarantining. And I also would like to reach out to you guys this summer, those of you that will work with us on some curriculum reviews, some things that we can start helping with as parents in the classrooms and in the schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. Carrie? After Carrie, we have Kaitlyn Hoskins, Cynthia Doakes, and then Dalton Camden?
Good evening, and I also want to say thank you for last Friday's vote. I really appreciate, as a teacher, the opportunity to go to my kids this week and say, guess what, next year we get to come back to school and you can make the choice whether you want to wear the mask. The relief on their faces told a story. And so I say thank you for what you did last Friday. In that big picture of talking about the policies, excuse me, for next school year, there's just two things that I want to mention. And it sounds like, as a teacher, I saw numerous situations where it was detrimental to my students to have to be out for that stretch of time. And when we're talking about that, excuse me, I'll get that in a minute, that next year we're not gonna have the e-learning environment, it just seems like it's gonna be really hard to administer. So I'm hoping that you will look closely at those quarantine policies we applied this year. And then the other thing is, I am rated, as a teacher, on the annual evaluations of my relationships with parents. And what we had to do this year to survive, to make everything work, basically created our parent relationships to be a huge challenge. Of that, parent conferences were on Zoom because they couldn't come in and talk to us. And just the strains on the relationships. I just really hope that we can back off on all the restrictions that we applied of who can be on campus and when and why, because it really caused a lot of struggles between the teachers and the parents that really our focus needs to be on, what are we gonna do to repair what happened this last year so that we can have strong relationships with our parents again? So again, thank you for what you're doing and I look forward to being helpful on anything that you guys might do in the future, because I would be willing.
Thanks, Carrie. Kaitlyn Hoskins?
Good evening, my name is Kaitlyn Hoskins. I'm a new teacher to Brevard County and a cheerleading coach at West Shore Junior-Senior High School. I just wanted to take a moment to express my desire for Brevard County to bring back competitive cheerleading. As one of the only school districts in the state of Florida that does not allow competitive cheerleading, especially when the National High School Cheerleading Championship is held just 45 minutes away and we can't compete at it, I feel that not allowing them to compete is only doing a disservice to our athletes. There are a few reasons why I think you, as a school board, should consider bringing back competitive cheerleading to Brevard. The first reason being that missed opportunity for college scholarships. At just UCF alone, cheerleaders receive a 50% in-state tuition scholarship, which could significantly make college affordable for some athletes. Without the competitive aspect added to our cheerleading programs, the athletes are missing out on an opportunity to improve their skills necessary to earn scholarships for cheerleading in college. Secondly, the argument against allowing competitive cheer, stating that it would add additional costs to schools, is not justified since cheerleading already receives little to no funding from schools' athletic departments. Allowing teams to compete wouldn't really put an additional financial strain for the schools, since we already have the materials, insurance, resources, trainings, uniforms, mats, practice locations, et cetera, in place to compete, as it is the same resources needed to execute game-day cheerleading that we do for basketball and football teams. The only way competitive cheerleading would impact the school is extra practice time for the athletes and coaches, which, as you can see tonight, we are all supportive of. There is really not much difference between competitive and sideline cheer, so we're simply asking for approval for support to compete. Finally, the last reason you should consider approving competitive cheer is that it will bring camaraderie to the school, instill school pride, and promote healthy competition amongst athletes, especially after a tough year of feeling disconnected due to COVID. I have the support of my athletes, parents, athletic director and principal regarding making the best decision for our athletes and hope you consider allowing cheerleaders to compete in Brevard. If you decide to do this, I can assure you, Brevard County will not disappoint. You have many excited and eager athletes and coaches that want to excel in this area. Specifically, West Shore will exceed all expectations, just as we do in many other academic and athletic competitions. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thanks, Kaitlyn. Cynthia? Cynthia Doakes?
Good evening. I've walked through these doors as a UCF doctoral student. I've walked through these doors as a advocate for the Moors, as a take-stalk-in-children mentor. But tonight, I come in my most important role, and that's the mom of Kalia Brothers, a four-year varsity chair at Rockledge High. And I would say it started maybe on the delivery table, that she did a cartwheel, TMI. And I knew she was talented then. In the last 17 years of her life, she was dedicated to both gymnastics and cheerleading. At two, she was at Travis Park with Ms. Barbara. She's been around the county at Harbor City Gymnastics, Tumbleweeds, over on Merritt Island. And with gymnastics, it's sort of kind of a me-sport. So in her eighth grade, and when she was in eighth grade at Kennedy, she tried out for Rockledge High and got in as a freshman cheerleader. And she's had a sisterhood ever since for the last four years. They work together, they play together, they get up in condition. We have to get up at 4:00 in the morning sometimes to make it to practice at 6:00 in the morning. And all of that is great, but it really got serious about two years ago, two or three years ago, when we saw UCF win national championships. And we're like, hey, we can go someplace with this. And then this year, University of South Florida, won national championships here. So we have these schools here in Florida, these colleges here in Florida that are winning national championships off of cheerleading. So I'm just asking that we consider bringing back competitive cheer so these young ladies and gentlemen can have that opportunity to bring it to the next level and compete, they can showcase their skills in the four years of high school, but then take it to the next level and cheer at places like UCF and USF. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dalton?
771,258. That is how many COVID-19 cases the Florida Department of Health reported in this year in K-12 schools. Most cases were among high school students, more specifically, in just a two-day period. 16 people caught COVID-19, causing 172 people, both staff and student bodies, to be quarantined according to your district's COVID-19... be quarantined, according to your district's COVID-19 dashboard and the Florida Department of Health. This board's premature decision to be, to both make masks optional and, and singular school e-learning is not only a death sentence, but it's moronic, to be frank. By making masks an option regardless of vaccination status is against science and CDC guidelines and a danger to both unvaccinated and vaccinated students among your faculty. As we learn more about the new variants emerging and traveling, some of these variants even heavily affect children. Some people say wearing a mask is a breach of personal freedoms. I say, if you think wearing a mask is a breach of personal freedoms, you do not know what a breach of personal freedoms is. I'm currently enrolled in Astronaut High School as an e-learner because I cannot trust my own school sanitation and ventilation to be safe. I've witnessed many incidents of improper mask-wearing and poor sanitation by faculty, so much so that I felt physically unsafe enough to have the e-learn to keep me and my family safe. Poor ventilation is imperative, proper ventilation is imperative to preventing transmission of COVID-19. How today are Brevard County's HVAC systems? Please make plans and protocols to upgrade old and ineffective ventilation because it could save lives and prevent many unnecessary COVID-19 cases in the future. How many students, many students like the schools they go to and are involved with clubs and other extracurricular activities, but do e-learning? Some students live with immune-compromised parents and guardians who will quite literally die if they catch COVID-19. Taking away the option to e-learn is a selfish decision based on the assumption that either all students live with healthy people and/or are healthy people. With that, I strongly urge the members of this board to revise these ignorant and deadly policy changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dalton. All right. The board wishes to thank this evening's speakers. Your willingness to join us is appreciated. We are now going to move into the consent agenda. Dr. Mullins?
There are 19 agenda items under this category.
What are the wishes of the, oh, does any board member wish to pull any item from the consent agenda? Okay. All right. Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
Maybe I need to refresh.
Did you get it?
I haven't gotten anything. Did you get anything?
Yeah.
Might need to refresh. Come on.
Here's to come up, Ms. Campbell.
I'm good.
I got it.
The motion passes five zero. All right. We are moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Mullins?
The fir, the first item is G28 on school board confirmation travel request for Mr. Susan. Section 1001 dot 39 subsection 1 Florida statutes titled District School Board Members' Travel Expenses provides that reimbursement of authorized travel expenses outside of the district that exceeds $500 requires prior approval by the board to confirm that such travel is for official business and complies with rules of the State Board of Education. Additionally, the public must have an opportunity to speak to the specific travel agenda item. Mr. Susan is requesting to attend the Florida School Board Association Joint Conference in Tampa from June 11th, excuse me, June 9th through the 11th. The board will be asked to allow public comment and confirm that the travel expenses are for official school board business and comply with the rules of the State Board of Education.
Is there anyone present who wishes to address the travel request of Mr. Susan to the Florida School Board Association Joint Conference in Tampa, June 9th through 11th? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. All right. Any additional discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G29 is to allow public comment and confirm that Mrs. Jenkins' travel expenses to the Florida School Board Association Annual Joint Conference, June 9th through 11th, are for official school board business and comply with the rules of the State Board of Education.
Are there any speakers present who wish to address Ms. Jenkins' travel expenses to the Florida School Board Association Joint Conference in June? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G30, item G30 is to hold a public hearing and approve Board Policy 8330 Student Records.
Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the revisions to Board Policy 8330 Student Records? Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the revisions to Board Policy 8330 Student Records? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G31 is to hold a public hearing and approve Policy 6605 Crowdfunding, which is a new policy.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak to the proposed new board policy 6605 Crowdfunding? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the proposed new board policy 6605 Crowdfunding? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G32 is to hold a public hearing and approve Board Policy 6144 Investment.
Would anyone present like to publicly address the revisions in Board Policy 6144 Investments? Would anyone present like to publicly address the revision in Board Policy 6144 Investments? What are the wishes of the board?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G33 is on procurement solicitations.
What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Dougal, moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Yeah, we're hung up. Need a voice vote on that one, Pam?
Oh, wait, there it goes.
Oh, we're good. Maybe.
It hasn't come up yet.
Yeah, it advanced. It's just not giving us a vote button yet. Okay. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G34 is on administrative and professional reappointment nominations for the school year 2021-22.
Uh, Mr. Susan, I believe you need time for comments on this item, no?
Is it? Yeah. Oh, yeah, I got it. Yes, Ms. Belford, and members of the board, I will recuse myself from voting on this item. My vote may be perceived as a conflict of interest because my spouse appears on the reappointment list.
Mr. Susan, your mic's not on.
It's okay. They can hear me. Are you serious?
Yeah.
Okay. It was that good you wanted to hear it again, didn't you? Yes, Ms. Belford, and members of the board, I will recuse myself from voting on this item. My vote may be perceived as a conflict of interest as my spouse appears on the reappointment list, even though she's not fully, all right. I will also file Form 8B with our amazing general counsel, Mrs., Mr. Gibbs, the memorandum of voting conflict with Ms. Escobar also as required. I have signed it, and it is officially in record. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, Mr. Susan. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Jenkins. Is there any discussion? Please vote.
That's where I abstain, right? Escobar, you got me as in abstain? It's not on my list over here to do. Usually, we can do that.
The motion passes four zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G35 is on reappointment nomination of annual contract teacher for the 2021-2022 school year.
Ms. Jenkins, I believe you have comments on this one?
Do I have to say them as enthusiastically as Mr. Susan?
You are a speech language.
You can say it as dry as you'd like.
I would say that I am challenged, you're challenged to try to do that.
Thank you, Mrs. Belford and members of the board. I will recuse myself from voting on this item since my vote may be perceived as conflict of interest, as it is for the reappointment of my spouse. I will file Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict with Ms. Escobar as required.
Thank you, ma'am. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McDougall, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes four zero. Dr. Mullins?
Item G36 is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions to Board Policy 5830 Student Fundraising.
Is there anyone here who has come to address the revisions to Board Policy 5830 Student Fundraising? Is there anyone here who has come to address the revisions to Board Policy 5830 Student Fundraising? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. McDougall. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. Dr. Mullins?
Our last action item for this evening is to hold a public hearing and approve the revisions to Policy 3215 Tobacco-Free Environment.
Is there anyone here who has come to address the revisions to Policy 3215 Tobacco-Free Environment? Is there anyone here who has come to address the revisions to Policy 3215 Tobacco-Free Environment? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Susan, seconded by Ms. Campbell. Is there any discussion? Please vote. The motion passes five zero. There's one item under the information agenda. No vote will be taken this evening, but it may be brought back for action at a later time. Does any board member wish to discuss the information item on tonight's agenda? All right. We'll now hear the remaining public, oh, we don't have any more public speakers. So we have two discussion items on this evening's agenda. Ms. Jenkins asks for the board to consider writing a letter asking Governor DeSantis to veto the transgender youth sports ban, and Mr. Susan asked to discuss competitive cheer. Ms. Jenkins?
Sure. So I went ahead and sent you guys the letter that Orange County had drafted. It was just a short paragraph, kind of straight to the point. I also sent you guys the section of the bill that is under question. And I just really feel like if we are all in favor of our guidelines that have been in place for years and we have no issues here, we really need to stand up for our students and their families and let them know where we stand on this issue. I don't think there's anything wrong with dissenting a bill that isn't even signed yet by the governor. I think it's within our, within our rights to just kind of make a statement out there and stand up for our kiddos. So that's just how I feel.
Anyone wish to speak? Ms. Campbell?
So I appreciate the people that we've heard tonight that have talked about standing up for every student. The problem that I have with supporting the letter or sending a letter to ask the governor to veto is that I believe that there is a conflict in doing this and supporting every student. And so I do not support a letter, and I'm just going to take a moment to share why. And I did, I did write it out, so I wouldn't go over and preach along with sermon, Ms. Belford. While I don't necessarily appreciate the way that this was attached to a completely unrelated bill, I believe the protections it calls for are necessary for our girls' athletics. Our own policy on interscholastic athletics states, "Participation in the district's interscholastic athletics programs by a student is a privilege, not a right." So what you're asking for us to do is to raise the privilege of one group of students over the protection of another. And I do believe it is about protection, not just of girls' athletics, but of biological girls themselves. If this bill amendment wasn't about protection, it would also have limited the participation of transgender boys on boys' sports teams, but it does not. Just this weekend, I was having a conversation with my girls where they were lamenting the unequal opportunities between boys and girls' sports. They don't have the history, are not aware of the history, of the decades-long battle to create opportunities for females to be able to compete, to succeed, and to move on to higher levels of competition against their similar-bodied peers. And even then, there's still differences. Basketballs are smaller, softballs are bigger, and are thrown underhanded. In gymnastics, men have the rings and the pommel horse while the women have the balance beam, all in recognition of the biological differences between people born male and those born female. I'm going to add that this is not just a conservative issue, or a Christian issue, or a Republican issue. I noticed when I was watching the original bill go through the House, I listened to a lot of the debate, and that included Representative James Bush, who is a Democrat from the Miami area, and a former teacher and coach who shared his great concern about the safety of putting a stronger male-born body against a weaker female-born body. And even in the LGBTQ community, they do not speak in unison on this issue, as certain prominent LGBTQ athletes and former athletes have spoken out against the participation of transgender girls and women on female teams. When we take a vote, we only need three board members to be in agreement. But for a letter like this, I would hope that we're looking for unanimous support before sending something out in our collective name, and I cannot give you my support.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. Anyone else wish to speak? I will, um, I'm, I'm not jumping in front of you guys, right? I wanted to make sure I just didn't miss you before I speak. Okay. So I, I respect where this is coming from. I have a couple struggles with this. One, as Ms. Campbell referenced, this was threaded into the charter bill, basically, and done very intentionally because the charter bill is going to go through. There's virtually no chance that the governor is not going to sign this bill. If we were to have advocated on this bill, I think it should have happened much sooner before it's going to the governor's desk. Because at this point, it's, it's a done deal. It's, it, there's nothing that's going to stop the bill. The other thing that I would say about it is that regardless of where you fall on this issue, I really think the best thing is for this issue to be litigated. And the issue cannot be litigated in the state of Florida if we don't have the policy in place at the state level. Because once again, we are in a situation where federal direction and state direction is in conflict. And we seem to find ourselves there quite a bit. In fact, I mentioned to Mr. Susan earlier, I think, or maybe it was Mr., I think it was Mr. Calucci, I said it to you. I would suggest that there is going to be more litigation this year over bills that were passed during this session than in were passed during this session than in any other year, because there have been so many things that have been done that are in conflict. And so while absolutely support all of our students, and I hope that all of our students understand that we are here to advocate on their behalf, I'm not going to be supporting the writing of the letter on this issue. So I will take, I guess, Ms. Campbell has concern about it being done without unanimous. I think any board member who wishes to do so could certainly do so as an individual board member. Mr. Gibbs, is there anything that suggests that there's a limitation on that? As I, I mean, I can certainly understand Ms. Campbell's concern about her name being put on something that she's in, in definite disagreement with.
It couldn't be in the name of the board. Certainly can contact the governor yourselves and say, "You don't support this and why?"
Okay, so we would need to have it unanimous in order for something to come from the board?
It would have to be for, by a majority for it to have board action.
Okay.
So it would still have to be three two?
It would have to be at least three two for, for the board to take action on behalf of the board, but any board member can reach out individually on the issue.
May I say something else?
Sure.
Yeah, so when you take a look at this bill, the langu-, the language with, within it and throughout it is extremely sexist and discriminatory. It was clearly written by a bunch of men. Women don't need protection, they're not weaker, and that is literally what the language says throughout. It puts language in there so people can sue for harm. There is just, there is fear-mongering language throughout that bill. The other issue I have is it was intentionally put in that charter bill at the last minute for a reason, so that it would just get thrown in there, get passed by the House, get passed by the Senate, and get thrown to the governor on a bill that everyone knows he's going to sign. I saw something recently that I just can't forget. Wrong is wrong even if everybody is doing it, and right is right even if nobody is doing it. And I think for us to say, "We should have advocated for this sooner, this is not the time," to me, that's just, that's not, that's not right. That's wrong. Then we should have done it sooner, and we did it, so we need to do it now. If we're going to have guidelines in place and we're going to defend those guidelines to our constituents and to our community and for our students and their families, then we should have the guts to stand up and say something now. This is discriminatory, it is not okay. Our females in sports didn't need protections for the past how many years that this has been going on, Rivard County? We have no reported issues whatsoever. And this is just one day someone decided this would be a really good political talking point, they used it, they're using it for fear, they're throwing it in a bill to get it signed. The other thing I'll say is if we want to advocate for protections for females in sports, then maybe some people in the legislature and the federal level, whatever, statewide, need to be looking at how our female athletes are paid less than our male athletes, how our female athletes don't have the same opportunities as our male athletes. Maybe tar-, maybe targeting some of those things to make equality throughout. But targeting our trans children is not going to make things more equal for all of our students, and I feel adamant about that. And if you don't want to write a letter, that's quite all right, but I didn't want to go ahead and do it without you guys knowing and taking a stance on it, but I absolutely will be sending a letter myself. I will be making a phone call, I will be sending an email. I'll be doing everything in my part, because I ran on a campaign for equality and equity. I had no idea that these issues would be coming up and being what I feel so passionately about, but after meeting these amazing people and their children and their students, I felt like I was doing a disservice to them by not bringing it up and giving you the opportunity to join me. So thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Jenkins. So is there any other board member who would like to weigh in or suggest that we have a majority in support of a letter? Okay. So thank you, Ms. Jenkins, for bringing forth that opportunity for discussion. Mr. Susan, you also asked to discuss competitive cheer on this meeting.
So I have a question. Mr. Gibbs, do, because we brought that, would this have needed a, a vote?
Your mic's not on, Ms. McDougal.
Oh, shoot, forgot. So, Mr. Gibbs, I have a question. So Ms. Jenkins brought it up, and do we need to vote on this? Do we, what is, what's?
It's not really a vote item, it would just be if the board wanted to send a collective letter to the governor regarding its position on the bill, it would need a majority vote, it would need a majority of the board to be in support of that letter. It's just like the other letters you've sent, it's usually a consensus of, there's, there's the board in agreement with sending a letter, and then the letter gets drafted and the chair signs it, if the board isn't supportive.
Am I still allowed to use a letterhead, an official letter for myself?
It would just be you personally.
Okay, thank you.
So we can use the letterhead? So I guess I'm...
Your mic's off again.
So, what I'm hearing is that Ms. Campbell, Mr. Susan, and Ms. Belford are not interested in sending a letter.
On behalf of the entire board?
On behalf of the entire board. So I would also, will be sending a letter, so.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. All right, Mr. Susan, competitive cheer.
Yeah, so I want to say thank you to everybody for giving me the opportunity to discuss the competitive cheer option, as many of the sentiments that Ms. Hardy had said in her eloquent speech earlier, giving public opinion, public comment, there is a, a need for competitive cheer. Many of you guys, going back, you know, a decade, we had, this has been going on and on and on. So when I was a teacher at Space Coast, there was a call for competitive cheer. When I was first on the school board, there was a call for competitive cheer, and at the time, there was not as much in-depth analysis over what we were looking at. You know, one of only two in the, in the state that do not provide it. There's stipends already being paid for, there's, like, it all kind of came out, and I wanted to put it out here as a discussion item for everybody to discuss, if there's a, a want by everybody to move forward. Since I put it on the, on the discussion item, I've pressed in different areas to see how do we make this happen in like a three-day period, right? So many of you guys who are here tonight for other issues, I put it on the agenda on Friday, and here it is Tuesday, right? So it's like we're trying to pull this thing off in three days. What I also found out was that FHSAA gave us a, FHSAA needs to give us a, they had to have approval tonight, okay? So there's a lot of stuff that was like rammed into a minute. And in Rivard, one of the issues that we have is you can't take a huge ship like that and turn it that fast, right? So risk management needs to evaluate a lot of the situations that are going to happen. We need to make sure that we have all of the cost structures in place, we need to make sure that the, that the, there's all of those pieces. So I put it on the agenda to discuss it, didn't know some of those other ramifications that were around it, but I think I would like to advocate for it. Does that make sense to you? Like, I am put it on the agenda because I was going to try to put it and make it happen this year, but with all of the circumstances that are around it, I don't know if that's possible. I'm still going to fight to try to make it happen, but I don't know if that's possible. But I did want to bring it up and hear what you guys thought. You know, there might be a goal to have engagement for next year, there might be a goal to engage, to have competitive cheer here interlocally while we're trying to work through all the workouts. There's just so much here that I wanted to put it on the thing, and I wanted to discuss all of the items and stuff like that. So that's my throw-out, and now I know each one of you guys are going to say something about it.
Mr. Susan, can I just ask a clarifying question? When you say you want to make it happen this year, you're meaning this school year?
October of twenty-one, or twenty-two.
So that would be next school year?
October, so my original initial request was to do it in October of twenty-one, it would start this year, right? So, but the F A, I did not know the FHSAA needed to do a request, like today is the deadline, right?
Oh.
So the problem that I run into is, look, I want competitive cheer. That woman that said, that was up here speaking, talking about scholarships, my girlfriend in my junior year was the number one cheerleader in the nation, and she won a scholarship to Florida State Full Ride Scholarship. That was nineteen ninety-two. So the thing is, is that there's an opportunity there for our kids that we're missing, and I wanted to make that happen. What I was running up against was, how do we get it done so fast? I don't think there is, but I wanted to bring it as a discussion item, because three years ago, we went through this, and it wasn't as prevalent, I have an idea, the, the ramifications of the time classifications for other sports that we have and that stuff. So I wanted to hear what your thoughts were, see where you guys felt, and then see, I don't, I was going to kind of tell Dr. Mullins, and he can elaborate, I don't know if there's enough time to do it this year. I just got emails last Thursday, put it on the agenda Friday, you know what I mean? And now I'll try, but I don't know if it's possible, so let's, let's talk about it.
Dr. Mullins, I think you and your team have already been working on this issue. Would you like to update us on the status before we go and just weigh in separately on something that's already in progress, or?
Sure, sure. Ms. Moore and her division have been working on evaluating athletic opportunities for athletes, and we have had very little discussion beyond the division level or even cabinet level to address that, when Mr., but it is a, it, it's a process. So evaluating the opportunity, talking with our school leaders, talking with our coaches across the district, fully evaluating the financial implications, and then prioritizing a budget allocation for that as it may be necessary, the liability implications and so on, that, you know, to Mr. Susan's point, he's correct, that takes time. The process that, that my staff had been working toward is a potential full-year twenty-two, twenty-three implementation, and using this year to fully vet the potential, and I, I believe we could bring back to the board more research related to this that would weigh into the, the, either the recommendation or the potential of moving forward, probably by the middle of next school year.
Can I just ask a question? When you say there's a deadline that's today, do they not offer extensions to their deadlines?
We're under an extension. Like, I'm going to go call them, you know me, I'm going to drive them nuts. I'm going to call them, and I'm going to say I want another extension.
I'm sorry, so we currently have an extension for cheerleading?
We have an extension to make a decision that's due today.
For cheerleading specifically, or for other things?
For competitive cheer.
Okay, how did that get initiated, though?
We contacted, when we began discussions looking at it approximately two months ago, I believe, the deadline was approaching then, but they said they would potentially consider an extension. When staff continued considering it, it was for a twenty-two, twenty-three implementation, but when Mr. Susan brought it to my attention last week, we reached out to FHSAA, and they said they would, they would have to have a decision by today. It was the, it was a hard deadline.
Ms. Campbell?
The other, I just have another question, though, because I don't, I'm going to be honest with all of you that came here to figure out cheerleading, I don't understand all the background information of how to get that done, but if it's not possible to make it official with FHSAA, I always want to mess that up, is there a way we can be creative here and at least start where we're having our, our own high schools and middle schools competing against each other, just to give them some kind of opportunity to be competitive and kind of practice?
So, so to your point, I pressed Dr. Mullins in a meeting, right before this meeting, and we were pressing this issue, and Dr. Mullins probably gave me the best speech that I've heard since I've been in here. He has a personal relationship over lacrosse, which is following the same process here, right? We had advocated for it and all that stuff, and, and what, the way he explained it to me eloquently, I was like, "That's amazing, and your heart is with making this happen and, and trying to make all of it possible." The problem is, is that it's just so fast, so I agree with you a hundred percent, because that's exactly what I said next. So, okay, if we can't do it now, your heart's there, feel like we can get there, but I think everybody needs to check it, then what can we do now? We can have our own competitive cheer here in the county, where we have a weekend where they compete. We can have a sport day, where the programs from around the southeast United States come down and watch our kids competitively cheer. We can do all that, that's possible. But being a part of the FHSAA competitive cheer this year happens tonight, and I, like, I mean, risk management, all those pieces need to fall into place, and I did not know that until I walked into that meeting at about four-thirty. That's all.
Yeah, I understand that, but what I'm just saying is...
Yes, we can.
We have to give them approval to, to do the program, correct?
We, I'm sorry, the, do we have to give, the board has to give me approval, or?
Well, yeah, do, they need approval to do a competitive cheer program.
With, through the FHSAA, yes.
Okay.
I, I don't, you know, I, I haven't had an opportunity to even talk to staff about Mr. Susan's proposal, similar to yours, Mrs. Jenkins. I don't know admittedly enough about competitive cheer to provide any suggestion we could or couldn't, but, you know, we could certainly look into it and find out what that, what would be involved and what the feasibility is.
So I lobbed it out there to discuss it. So let's have it, let's talk.
Okay. Well, I certainly support this, I think it makes perfect sense, give our, I'm sorry, I jumped right in. I'm sorry, Ms. Belford, I just, I don't hardly ever talk, so.
You are perfectly fine, Ms. McDougal.
So I just feel that this gives our, our young ladies another avenue for, if there's the ability to get a scholarship, to go someplace, that makes perfect sense. And you're right, a lot of the sports lean towards men, and so let's give something for our young ladies. So yes, I, if, I'm glad we're moving forward.
So, Ms. Campbell, I was, I, you, you were, had requested Mike, and then we got off, off track, so.
I'm good.
So it was actually, she was like the first one after Mr. Susan spoke, but then I, I didn't get to her, so I apologize.
No, I am, I'm fine. And I think I see Dr. Ranjit back there. I, is there an opportunity, I'm thinking, you know, like Color Guard, they have kind of a fall season and a winter season or whatever, is there opportunity to do the mid-year thing, or is it, it's like the all, all, all year or nothing?
All year.
All year, okay. So when this topic came up on Friday, and we started getting a few emails, I think either that morning or maybe the day before, it is very unfortunate that we're, the advocacy is starting late, because I mean, it really, I mean, probably means that we need to be like postmarked by today, and it's seven seventeen. And we obviously have other things that have to get filled out and go. So, but I would, I went back, because I, I had the, in the back of my mind, there was an email that went around, a conversation I had with our former athletic director, and I forwarded you guys the email that the reason why competitive cheer went away a long time ago, before it became an FHSAA sport, was because of some very bad behavior of some former cheer parents. So I think it would be great if we can do that, especially if we already have a thing, if it's not, we're, we're, we had a budget workshop this afternoon showing, and we're seeing how tight our recurring dollars are, they're basically non-existent for the next couple of years. So it really needs to be something, but if we have, if it's not additional costs and we've got everything in place, I, I'd like to see it happen. I would just say this, if we're going to have a year this year where we're kind of doing in-county competitions, I would just say, get the word, cheer coaches, get the words out to your parents to be on their very best behavior, because I would sure hate for them to ruin it this first year out before we get the final approval to go into FHSAA level competition. But definitely would like to hear some more information from staff as far as what this will entail and what it looks like in other districts, but if that is something that can be done, certainly would be willing, I see Ms. Moore appearing from the magic door, to see something happen in county, as long as everybody's on their very best behavior.
Dr. Mullins, do you need, what, what do you need from us? Obviously, we, we're not going to approve an application tonight, right? Because we, that would just be, without dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and knowing all the info, right? So.
Correct, and Ms. Moore, I just want to confirm, the deadline was today, correct? Tonight, or today?
Let's go for it.
And I, the discussions I've had with Ms. Moore more recently over the last few days, we, we want to find the way to yes, but to do it equitably, to do it safely, to do it responsibly, requires some time. To the point that we were moving to twenty-two, twenty-three, we even reached, and when I saw there was the potential of an extension, I said, "Well, let's find out what the deadline is before we go much further." And that's when we reached, literally reached out today and said, "Do we have at least until June ninth, when we can meet again as a board on June eighth?" And they said, "Absolut-, absolutely not." It was a hard deadline for tonight. So I don't, I don't believe that we can take, I can assure you, all of the things that we are committed to as a district, not the least of which is equity, to do this the right way, but we can certainly walk that out, and I, I, I think the year timeline, to do this well, and to do it right for all of our kids, and the opportunity is the appropriate approach.
Yes, thank you. The, the only thing I wanted to add is that we do need to investigate if we are allowed to do any competition for a sport that's sanctioned with FHSAA outside the FHSAA. to do any competition for a sport that's sanctioned with FHSAA outside the FHSAA. So, before we rally around that, I want to make sure that we have the opportunity to have that conversation with FHSAA.
Can I speak to that? Because we have football teams that aren't a part of FHSAA that go play football games against other teams all throughout the state of Florida. So, they're not a part of FHSAA, that just means that you can't go be a part of the final competition. So, if you're, don't sign on to be a part of it, we can have them, we just can't go outside of our county. And so, we could have an inter-county competition if we wanted to.
So, if I might suggest, it sounds to me like the team is already working on the issue and is prepared to continue working through it, and bring us back more thorough, and I shouldn't say more thorough, because your information is thorough, but bring us back fully-vetted information for the boards to be able to make a decision going forward, right? Like, what I'm hearing is board support for making it happen, but we want to do it in a responsible manner, to make sure everything is in the right place, right? So, Dr. Mullins, you don't need anything from any of us at this point, right, in order for you and the team to do that?
No, I'm very comfortable with we're moving forward.
Okay. So, any need for additional discussion from the board?
Just like it to be clear that we gave direction that we would like to have an inter-county competition, and then move forward towards having this officially for next year. Is that what I hear?
I would, I personally, and certainly everyone can weigh in, I would like to get to that, but I want to make sure that staff has looked into it appropriately and make sure that we're not messing anything up by doing so.
I'm not saying that...
We'll definitely, if I understand, we'll definitely move forward in exploring the potential for an inter-district activity, competition, of course, going through all the proper channels, as we also simultaneously are moving to go to competitive cheer as a district in '22-'23. Is that...
I think that's what you were looking for, right, Mr. Susan?
Yeah, and I can try to get the FHSAA to give us another...
Okay, so I think we're good on that issue, right? Thank you, Ms. Moore, for joining us, we appreciate it.
Ms. Belford, may I, just, Ms. Moore, before you leave, would you connect with Ms. Hardy from Mark Letchey? I think she had something to, she wanted to make sure we were aware of. Thank you.
All right, Ms. McDougal, I believe that you have requested a, an opportunity for additional board input on an issue.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, board. I feel that I need to address this. This happened at our Friday meeting, and I stood about this, and so I'm going to discuss it. There was one speaker who came up and talked about our mandate, our school mandate for masks, how she compared it to the Star of David, and I find it, I found it unconscionable that somebody would take a symbol that was, that was attached to people being killed. So, I have a question for this speaker. I want to know that our mask mandate, did that take away your business? Did our mask mandate take away your home and move you to a ghetto?
No, stop, stop.
Did our mask mandate take away your place of worship? And trans pay...
Hold on one second. The audience is not to respond to her. If you can't be here and participate within the expectations of decorum, you can escort yourself out, okay? I'm not going to ask one more time. Ms. McDougal, you have time.
Thank you. I want to know if the mask mandate took you in a boxcar to a concentration camp where you were gassed and then cremated? And of course not, it did not do that. I find it, I find the audacity and the ability to say that is just unbelievable to me, and it shows me that people are not cognizant and know enough about what happened in the Holocaust. And obviously, you never lost a family member or a relative in the Holocaust, and I felt that our mask mandate did not do any of those things, and to compare it to something so atrocious in our, in the past history, I find it just unconscionable, and I felt I needed to say that.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Dr. Mullins, stop.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Ms. Belford, can I address, can I say something?
Yes, please, Mr. Susan.
Okay, not to change the subject, you guys, but back to competitive cheer. In the event that we don't have a, we can't do an inter-county competition, and I'm able to get an extension to the July 9th, or the June 9th, I'm going to, I might bring it up again, just so you guys know, all right?
Thank you, Mr. Susan. Dr. Mullins, do you have anything additional to address this evening?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Any board members have any additional discussion prior to adjournment?
I do.
Ms. Jenkins?
Ms. McDougal, I appreciate you saying that, and I appreciate as the only Jewish person on our board to stand up and speak out about how atrocious those comments were. I appreciate you. I also, just before this meeting is over, I just want to say I'm extremely disappointed with the response tonight, and I encourage everyone on this board to reach out to their gay shit alliances at their schools, and sit down, get to know those students, hear where they're coming from directly, I think it's really important. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anyone else? If you're being up for their business, this meeting is adjourned.